Um, yes. I'm just, I'm just trying to listen to my phone.
Off TikTok, Cecilia.
No, I'm panicking. Do not disturb. Here.
All right, it is 8:33, Monday, August 26th.
6:33.
You are correct. 6:33. I'm in a hurry.
It's 8:33 somewhere.
In the ocean. Wilmete Park District Committee, the whole board, park commissioners. Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Frazier.
Here.
Commissioner Leahy.
Here.
Commissioner Murdock. Commissioner Clark.
Here.
Commissioner Kuzlaskis.
Here.
Commissioner Duffy.
Here.
You got a quorum.
We're going to make a motion to bring Julia Goble into the conversation. She is out of town on business and is calling in.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Commissioner Goble, you are in the meeting.
Thank you.
Yeah, don't be rude. Uh, okay. Second thing, communication correspondence. We already did roll call, so, correct?
Yep.
All right, communication correspondence, anything to add to what we received? Nope. Okay. All right, public comment, recognition of listeners, anybody that would like to speak? I am looking around the room. I don't think I see anybody new, so you guys all know, we have three minutes for everybody to make their comments. And I am going to start with this list.
Would you like to grab it?
No, I have the list.
Oh, okay. Alyssa, would you like to speak tonight?
Would you like to be added to the list to speak tonight?
Oh, sure, yeah. Two seconds.
Thank you. Sorry. Uh, okay, we'll start at the top. Ron Brzezinski. Hey, Ron, welcome to the meeting.
Thank you. Just want to make a couple of quick comments and get back out to the meeting. Number one, I've been a resident of Wilmete 57 years. My wife and I have raised three kids in the entire system, totally satisfied with everything that's going on here, participated in other activities, really just stop all the condominiums over here working with the park board. Great, great park board at that time. My biggest concern is that I spent most of my career working with companies to implement change management. How do you change a business? How do you change an organization? How do you do this? Rule number one, specify, elaborate, propagate, what are the benefits for the people we're going to have to change? In my opinion, this park board has failed to go ahead and address rule number one. Nowhere do I see, nowhere do I see how this is going to benefit any of us for putting in a fence. So I do ask that from the perspective of the citizens that we have the park board, pay attention to change management and start explaining how is it going to benefit all of us. Thank you. Thanks, Ron.
Yeah, I know.
Yep.
Alan Golden. Hey there, welcome.
Alan Golden, for those who don't know me, you know, 43-year resident of Wilmete or something like that, and I sort of live at Gilson Park. And my comment, thank, is not to say the fence is bad, or the fence is good, or access is, should be, not about that at all. The comment is basically an overall question. Since we now have joined every other Lake Shore community in charging access for swimming, Evanston started last year, Lake Bluff started last year, and we started this year. Every other community has the same issue we do, same arguments could be made for every other community on the North Shore, because they all charge for swim access. So my question is very simple. Has anybody gone to their park board meetings and demanded anything of them open up for free access? Some places like Evanston, residents are free, but non-residents pay. Lake Forest is the same way. Residents are free. I looked this all up today. Google's amazing. Non-residents are free, residents are free, non-residents have to pay. That may be a good model, I don't know. I'm not making that comment here one way or the other. The question is, did anybody go and make these same arguments with their park boards? Because it's the same situation. There's a beach, and then there's public access water. And just, just, don't answer me now, you can catch me after the meeting, but I'm just curious if anyone's talked to anybody else.
Not exactly the same.
No.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
It'll be a hundred years free.
Thank you.
Hello. So, Alan, thank you very much. Appreciate the insight. Marilyn Falkenberg.
Hello.
Hey, Marilyn, welcome to our meeting.
Thank you. I'm not really comfortable with public speaking, so I just want to add my voice against putting up the fence at the beginning of next spring. When I, I live at 11, I don't know, we need to save our address.
You're welcome to. Yeah, you're welcome to.
But the other, um, but yeah, I, I live at 1135 Elmwood. I grew up coming to Wilmete because my aunt lived here, and we would come here almost every weekend, you know, and I, I wanted to move here, and I've had my daughter in all the park district programs so satisfied with everything that I've seen up to this point. Going to, I guess, the South Beach and parking there was a way, like, I would go there after work just to relax and just like kind of clear my head, and the day that I went there and that fence was up was a particularly taxing day, right? And so my, and I didn't know it was going to be there, and so my reaction was, you know, like, oh my gosh, what is going on? Like, why? And, um, and so, you know, there, there's money reasons that could be a motivation. There's, I know, safety is talked about a lot, but, you know, as far as the swimming safety, there's no issue. That water is so shallow and, you know, the people that have cited that there's been deaths have been suicides, you know, it's like, it, people aren't, swimmers aren't dying in there. So I see you disagree, but it's, it's not necessary, and please take it down.
All right, thank you. Next up, Mary Thomas.
Hi, my name is Mary Thomas, and I've lived in Wilmete for 50 years, and I wasn't going to say anything, but this week I just had a number of things come into my mind with people that I talked to that I thought helped, so. So let me just look at my notes. I've been trying to look at this paid beach issue from both sides and maintain a positive attitude, but what I'm hearing from the residents that consistently come to these meetings, I'd say the major complaint is that we are really not listened to, and it's affecting everyone's mental health. After all, if you think about it, that's why people go to the beach. People go to the beach for their mental health, and that is a theme that I found particularly strong this week with a number of people that I talked to. And I found myself wondering, why do I feel stressed every time I go to the beach? Because this is the first time in 50 years that this has been a really difficult year to go to the beach, difficult summer to go to the beach. Whenever I get ready to go, I have to prepare myself for what kind of encounter am I going to have today, and want to take the high road, et cetera. But I've spent, you know, all these years with my kids on the beach as little kids and adults, I mean, as little kids and teenagers and adults, but yet I've been going to the beach mostly by myself this summer, and this has been the most stressful summer ever. So there's something to be said for that. I've had so many negative encounters with staff of all different ages and all different positions, and I've found so many inconsistencies in the rules about the beach that everybody claims to be enforcing one way or another, but they're not all on the same page. Tonight, I was down there at 5:00 PM on the South Beach. There were no lifeguards, and yet they're still charging people to swim. I asked the guard, I mean, the guy who's taking the money, charging people to swim at their own risk. We've had this discussion a lot about swimming at your own risk. It's not something you pay for. So why? Why are they still charging? And there are only two entrances now. The farthest south one is closed, so that becomes a difficulty for people that are parking down there thinking they're going to go in there. I mean, last week I had to walk all the way around the beach to get in from where I started. I've offered my time to Steve Wilson numerous times, that I have volunteered to work with the park district to see how we can make a situation for next year improved or better, but I've never heard back as to when that meeting might take place, and I know that you guys have asked, if people have input, we'd like to participate. So at this point, I have lots of ideas that I've shared with Steve and the board, and my conclusion is there needs to be at least some part of the beach that's free, and I think we can make this happen. And I think we need to work with the residents to get all of our input too. And yes, why can't we be the one beach on the North Shore that stands out as welcoming and has a free area?
Yes.
All right. Patricia?
Last time I spoke, I think it was more about my mental health than anything else. Tonight, a little bit different. And these are the phrases that are swirling around in my head. They might sound familiar. Who will fight for me? We want something better. Knock on doors, organize, advocate, hold firm to our convictions, freedom, truth for the people. At season's end, in your evaluation of how the summer went, follow my favorite rule of the road. It's not leave yourself an hour, although I like that one, but get the big picture. Money collected, it's never enough and should have no influence in an issue bigger than money. Employee response, what they think about the fence should be a diminished factor in your decision. They work for the people of Wilmete. They work for us. And again, the issue is bigger than whether they had fewer negative encounters with people waving in the water. The top priority is to act for the people, the citizens of Wilmete. We are the most important part of the equation. We have tenaciously laid out our concerns all summer. 100 years of precedent should not be erased. We want our land back. We want to be proud of our welcoming community. The fence should come down and stay down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve's your role.
Hi, I like the new configuration. It looks like you're part of the group here. I think we're all on this together. I'm, I'm not very happy with this board, as I've mentioned before. I think you all should resign. I think this is, I'm sure you do nice things in Wilmete. The park, the Gilson Park and the beach is the best thing we have, and so I'm very, very upset that you've ruined my, you've ruined my entire summer and you've ruined so many people's summer. Every time I go down, which is very rare now because I'm just too sad, I have seen some horrible incident with a lifeguard and a bunch of people. Yesterday, it was some girls who wanted to go on the beach and play, and they didn't have the $10. It's just heartbreaking. I can't stand to watch it. That's only one thing. I've seen maybe 50, 50 of these incidents. Another one was some Armenian kids who were, they danced every year on the beach because they do the Armenian festival in, in Evanston, where I went to see, because they Instagram me after, because I got them in free. I said, you know, they're not telling you, but you can walk in for, you can walk for free. So they all got, they were going to pay, have to pay each $10. There were eight of them. That's $80. That's insane. And I also have had heat stroke. I don't intend to get it again. So if you have the fence up again next year, I will do as I did this year. I will go in wherever I want, and where you harass people who have come in with their children, who are toddlers, trying to get in the water, rinsing them off, and people are screaming at them getting their walkie-talkies, I will go in, I say, okay, I'm going in exactly where you told them they can't go, and I will go in the water right now, and I will submerge, because I'm very hot. I'm very hot, and I do not intend to get heat stroke again. This is a travesty. Everything you've done is, is completely horrible. You've trained your people badly, and they're wonderful young people. I teach young people. I know how great they are. So I've got a song for you, because I don't want to go on, and I don't think it's the same thing having a beach that was free and open for 100 or plus years. It was 19, 19 ago, 1911. And then we had a paying beach. We had it settled. It wasn't broke. Didn't need to be fixed. So we were different from other people. We should have stayed that way. It's absolutely heartbreaking. So this is the song. So I sang one last week. I'm going to sing another one. No one on duty in lifeguard chairs that litter the beach, checkpoints and patrolling that keep lake water out of reach, red huge folded umbrellas tossed to the ground. These are a few of my most hated sounds. Trained teenagers saying that they're just following rules. Why does the park district take us for fools? The vista is ruined, and people who came for decades are gone. This is the reason I'm singing this song. Girls turned away for not having $10. Gates close at dusk, and then you get hollered. Kids in their uniforms on walking, walkie-talkies abound. These are a few of my most hated songs. When the heat bites, when the toddler cries, when you keep out good folk. I simply remember my most hated sounds, and then I start getting heat stroke. Rustled snowdrift fences block out the view.
All right, Anastasia, thank you very much.
Disabled elderly from their cars cry at you.
Thank you, Anastasia.
All of the foreign people cannot be found.
Thank you, Anastasia.
These are prioritized below sand dune mounds. Scrolling on phones and rolling in sand.
Where's where you want to start?
These are the train booths, and this is the plan. You can walk for free, but H2O's unknown though. How can you even cool off one toe? When the heat bites, when the toddler cries, when you keep out good folk. I simply remember my most hated sounds, and then I start getting heat stroke.
Percussion there.
Oh, percussion.
If I had a beat.
Uh, just, on this Morganti, on another note, I was wondering if the plans have been revised yet to show tree protection at Langdon for all trees that are on my property that need to be protected? I saw an arborist there two days ago. I was wondering, has the group has revised anything?
Okay.
No answer?
Well, when we get to Langdon in the agenda, we will get an update on it. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak before we move on? Jeffrey?
I'd like to address the troubling pattern of misconduct that has become all too common with this board and its leadership. Besides the other debunked excuses for the fence, the board cites a persistent narrative of misbehavior among park visitors, yet the police reports simply do not support these claims. It's reminiscent of the false narratives used to justify the Iraq War, where nonexistent weapons of mass destruction were cited as a reason to invade. Similarly, this board is creating a fictional account to justify oppressive and overreaching policies at Gilson Beach. The hypocrisy is staggering. While you attempt to criticize and control the public with these false narratives, the real misconduct is coming from within this very board. We've seen dramatic increases in reports of staff harassing visitors, some shared right here in these meetings, some blatantly violating First Amendment rights of individuals to speak in a public park. This isn't just an isolated issue. The Attorney General, the Attorney General recently determined that this board violated the Open Meetings Act by failing to publish minutes as required by law. In fact, the very meeting where the board directed staff to erect this fence in the first place was in likely violation of the law. We've also seen members of this board engage in egregious behavior, including threatening and blackmailing constituents and sending weird and repeated emails to female residents, making them uncomfortable and concerned for his mental state. And speaking of concerning mental states, one board member openly screamed at constituents, calling them animals and children. And let's not forget the instance where another board member labeled over 1,000 un-fenced Gilson supporters as radicals, a slanderous attack on our community. The park board has been holding a lot of closed-door meetings lately. I recently learned that in such meetings, the park district has illegally discussed matters that are required by law to be discussed in the open. And Steve Wilson has, and that Steve Wilson has openly encouraged illegal meetings outside of Wilmete to avoid being caught. Steve Wilson's long-observed culture of misconduct and grossly inappropriate behavior is now set to cost taxpayers well over $5 million, a stupidly avoidable burden, which this board chose to turn a blind eye to instead favoring Mr. Wilson. It's time for transparency, accountability, and a commitment to the laws that govern us all. The residents of Wilmete deserve better than Mr. Wilson, his board, and his ugly and mean-spirited fence. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm Barbara Sokarski. I'm a resident of Wilmete, and I just wanted to say I, too, like Anastasia, have been sad all summer. I won't go to the beach because I don't want to look at it. And I just want to say that for the last few years, you've put these poor young people in horrible positions by having them impose these draconian rules of irrational draconian rules of not letting adults soak their toes and ankles in water or rinse out baby bottoms. I think probably not all of them, but 80% of conflicts could have been avoided and not escalated if you weren't imposing these awful rules, militaristic rules, and having young kids do that that didn't know how to handle it really. And public beach, I think it's self-explanatory. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to, um,
Tanya Shabalier.
Sorry, Tanya Shabalier, 789 Michigan Avenue, Wilmete. I wanted to speak to an article that came out in the Wilmete Life last week that cites what you have all been speaking to, although JP Maxmira, the new marketing communications manager, said, spoke about the sidewalk width that complies with the Department of Transportation and ADA recommendations. And I want to say to that point that there are at least one entrance into the park that is ADA compliant into and throughout through the park. Secondly, he says that while ADA compliance is a factor, the primary concern is safety. The, for your path that you're going to be putting, assuming that you will be putting through the park on Harbor Drive, increasing the size of Harbor Drive. We are saying that the alternative path that we propose is more safe than what you have proposed, to keep Gilson green. And finally, as far as the trees are concerned, yes, you say you'll only take down two trees that are invasive. There are a number of other invasive bushes trees as well along Harbor Drive, but you haven't mentioned those. And the 358 new trees in the park that you plan on planting, you know, please let us know over which period of time those will be planted, because they're not going to be planted right away. And then, yeah, and then as far as crossing, trail crossing Michigan Avenue, this is absolutely not true in the alternative path that we have put forth. So the increased costs that you described in the alternative path could be alleviated if you do not add the five-foot sidewalk for pedestrians and cyclists that you have put in your plans. So I think that's all. Thanks.
Thanks, Tanya.
Thank you, Tanya.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak at this time? Yes, please.
I have Connie Seale. I have a couple of questions. Another point I want to bring up, because safety's been the issue, and I said at the last meeting that I've been down there many times, photos, I have videos. Lifeguard chairs emptied one day, three in a row, and the only lifeguard was the one closest to the Lake Street beach from the South Beach end. It was 4:30 in the afternoon, and I've seen it more than once, and I videoed it more than once, and I asked the staff, and they said, well, it's slow, but there are people in the water even though it's slow. So if safety is an issue, as you say, this is kind of going against it, and somebody, not a teenager, should be monitoring them. I don't want to have anybody drowning here. And the other thing I just wanted to ask, which I know you probably answered, but was the unrelated to this, was the lawsuit dismissed today. You can answer that when you're ready.
All right, thanks, Connie. Was anybody else intent, please?
Yeah, Karen Berry. I live at 420 Linden, and I'm speaking to the fence specifically. This is really personal for me. My husband, who passed away last September, grew up in Wilmete at Nathan Elmwood, and in 2013, we were living at 511 Maple. He was diagnosed with Parkinson's disease, and his caregivers encouraged him to get as much exercise as possible, saying that that could, there was evidence it would slow the progression. He chose as his exercise to go down to Gilson Park every morning, winter, summer, what didn't matter, and he had a path that he would choose that would bring him through the park, and then along the beach, he would jog, sort of, with his Parkinson's, with the rationale that it was, if he was going to fall, it was safer to fall on sand than on a cement sidewalk. More than that, he loved the Gilson Park beach. He never went in the water. When our grandchildren were in from out of town, he would get them up early in the morning to go down and watch the sunrise, and then go to Dunkin' Donuts. It was a ritual that all of our grandchildren, you know, came to love about grandpa. And until he could not, eventually I had to place him in residential care two and a half years ago, so at that point, he couldn't access the beach anymore. But I, it just grieves me to think, first of all, I think the fence is ugly. I don't like even driving past it. I cannot see the lake. I just, I just think he would be brokenhearted to see this fence or to think of any type of permanent fence being put up. And I agree that there are safety issues. I know those are concerns. I would like to think there's another way to address those, but on fence is my opinion.
Thank you. Steve Wilson, I'm going to close up with comment. Thank you all very much for your input, and we're going to move on to number four in our agenda, old business, third park update.
All right. So we went back to Upland, and we started to dive deeper into some of the numbers in regards to some of the park improvements. So one notable thing is that the basketball games and the painted games is about $20,000 lower than what it was when we presented last time, and there was an error in the spreadsheet. So that's.
Yes, I'm just, I'm just trying to listen to my phone.
Off TikTok, Cecilia.
No, I'm panicking. Do not disturb. Here.
All right, it is 8:33, Monday, August 26th.
6:33.
You are correct. 6:33. I'm in a hurry.
It's 8:33 somewhere.
In the ocean. Wilmete Park District Committee, the whole board, park commissioners. Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Frazier.
Here.
Commissioner Leahy.
Here.
Commissioner Murdock. Commissioner Clark.
Here.
Commissioner Kuzlaskis.
Here.
Commissioner Duffy.
Here.
You got a quorum.
We're going to make a motion to bring Julia Goble into the conversation. She is out of town on business and is calling in.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Commissioner Goble, you are in the meeting.
Thank you.
Yeah, don't be rude. Uh, okay. Second thing, communication correspondence. We already did roll call, so, correct?
Yep.
Communication correspondence, anything to add to what we received? Nope. Okay. All right, public comment, recognition of listeners, anybody that would like to speak? I am looking around the room. I don't think I see anybody new, so you guys all know, we have three minutes for everybody to make their comments. And I am going to start with this list.
Would you like to grab it?
No, I have the list.
Oh, okay. Alyssa, would you like to speak tonight?
Would you like to, would you like to be added to the list to speak tonight?
Oh, sure, yeah. Two seconds.
Thank you. Sorry. Okay, you're starting top, Ron Rosinski. Hey, Ron, welcome to the meeting.
Thank you. Just want to make a couple of quick comments and get back out to the meeting. Number one, I've been a resident of Wommet 57 years. My wife and I raised three kids in the entire system, totally satisfied with everything that's going on here, participated in other activities, really to stop all the condominiums over here, working with the park board. Great, great park board at that time. My biggest concern is that I spent most of my career working with companies to implement change management. How do you change a business? How do you change an organization? How do you do this? Rule number one, specify, elaborate, propagate what are the benefits for the people who are going to have to change. In my opinion, this park board has failed to go ahead and address rule number one. Nowhere do I see, nowhere do I see how this is going to benefit any of us for putting in a fence. So, I do ask that from the perspective of the citizens that we have the park board, pay attention to change management and start explaining how is it going to benefit all of us? Thank you.
Thanks, Ron. Yeah, right now. Alan Golden. Hey, there, welcome.
Alan Golden, for those of you who don't know me, I'm a 43-year resident of Wommet or something like that, and I sort of live at Gilson Park. And my comment, Hank, is not to say the fence is bad or the fence is good or access is, should be, not about that at all. The comment is basically an overall question. Since we now have joined every other lake shore community in charging access for swimming, Evanston started last year, Lake Bluff started last year, and we started this year, every other community has the same issue we do, same arguments could be made for every other community on the North Shore because they all charge for swim access. So, my question is very simple. Has anybody gone to their park board meetings and demanded anything of them open up for free access? Some places, like Evanston, residents are free, but nine residents pay. Lake Forest is the same way. Residents are free. I looked this all up today, Google's amazing. Non-residents are free, residents are free, non-residents have to pay. That may be a good model, I don't know. I'm not making that comment here one way or the other. The question is, did anybody go and make these same arguments with their park boards? Because it's the same situation. There's a beach, and then there's public access water. And just, don't even answer me now, you can catch me after the meeting, but I'm just curious if anyone's talked to anybody else.
Not exactly the same.
No.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
They beat to the hundred years free.
Thank you.
It's a different thing. By the way, he interested around.
So, Alan, thank you very much. Appreciate the insight. Marilyn Falkenberg.
Hello.
Hey, Marilyn, welcome to our meeting.
Thank you. I'm not really comfortable with public speaking, so I just want to add my voice against putting up the fence at the beginning of next spring. When I, I live at 11, I don't know, we need to save our address.
You're welcome to.
Okay.
Yeah, you're welcome to.
But the other, but yeah, I live at 1135 Elmwood. I grew up coming to Wommet because my aunt lived here, and we would come here almost every weekend, you know? And I, I wanted to move here, and I've had my daughter in all the park district programs so satisfied with everything that I've seen up to this point. Going to, I guess, the South Beach and parking there was a way, like, I would go there after work just to relax and just like kind of clear my head. And the day that I went there and that fence was up was a particularly taxing day, right? And so, my, and I didn't know it was going to be there, and so my reaction was, you know, like, oh, my gosh, what is going on? Like, why? And, and so, you know, there, there's money reasons that could be a motivation. There's, I know, safety is talked about a lot, but, you know, as far as the swimming safety, there's no issue. That water is so shallow and, you know, the people that have cited that there's been deaths have been suicides, you know? It's like, people aren't, swimmers aren't dying in there. So, I see you disagree, but it's, it's not necessary, and please take a dump.
All right, thank you. Next up, Mary Thomas.
Hi, my name's Mary Thomas, and I've lived in Wommet for 50 years. And I wasn't going to say anything, but this week, I just had a number of things come into my mind with people that I talk to that I can help. So, so, I'm just looking at my notes. I've been trying to look at this paid beach issue from both sides and maintain a positive attitude, but what I'm hearing from the residents that consistently come to these meetings, I'd say the major complaint is that we are really not listened to, and it's affecting everyone's mental health. After all, if you think about it, that's why people go to the beach. People go to the beach for their mental health, and that is a theme that I found particularly strong this week in the number of people that I talk to. And I found myself wondering, why do I feel stressed every time I go to the beach? Because this is the first time in 50 years that this has been a really difficult year to go to the beach, difficult summer to go to the beach. Whenever I get ready to go, I have to prepare myself for what kind of encounter am I going to have today? And why take the high road, et cetera? But I've spent, you know, all these years with my kids going to beach as little kids and adults, I mean, as little kids and teenagers and adults, but yet I've been going to the beach mostly by myself this summer, and this has been the most stressful summer ever. So, there's something to be said for that. I've had so many negative encounters with staff of all different ages and all different positions, and I've found so many inconsistencies in the rules about the beach that everybody claims to be enforcing one way or another, but they're not all on the same page. Tonight, I was down there at 5:00 PM on the South Beach. There were no lifeguards, and yet they're still charging people to swim. I asked the guard, I mean, the guy who's taking the money, charging people to swim at their own risk. We've had this discussion a lot about swimming at your own risk. It's not something you pay for. So, why? Why are they still charging? And there are only two entrances now. The farthest south one is closed, so that becomes a difficulty for people that are parking down there thinking they're going to go in there. I mean, last week, I had to walk all the way around the beach to get in from where I started. I've offered my time to Steve Wilson numerous times that I have volunteered to work with the park district to see how we can make the situation for next year improved or better, but I've never heard back as to when that meeting might take place. And I know that you guys have asked if people have input. We'd like to participate. So, at this point, I have lots of ideas that I've shared with Steve and the board, and my conclusion is there needs to be at least some part of the beach that's free, and I think we can make this happen. And I think we need to work with the residents to get all of our input, too. And yes, why can't we be the one beach on the North Shore that stands out as welcoming and has a free area?
Yes.
Patricia?
Last time I spoke, it was more about my mental health than anything else. Tonight, a little bit different. And these are the phrases that are swirling around in my head. They might sound familiar. Who will fight for me? We want something better. Knock on doors, organize, advocate, hold firm to our convictions. Freedom, truth for the people. At season's end, in your evaluation of how the summer went, follow my favorite rule of the road, is not leave yourself an out, although I like that one, but get the big picture. Money collected, it's never enough and should have no influence in an issue bigger than money. Employee response, what they think about the fence should be a diminished factor in your decision. They work for the people of Wommet. They work for us. And again, the issue is bigger than whether they had fewer negative encounters with people waving in the water. The top priority is to act for the people, the citizens of Wommet. We are the most important part of the equation. We have tenaciously laid out her concerns all summer. 100 years of precedent should not be erased. We want our land back. We want to be proud of our welcoming community. The fence should come down and stand. Thank you.
Stacia Royal.
Hi, I like the new configuration. It looks like you're part of the group here. I think we're all in this together. I'm, I'm not very happy with this board, as I've mentioned before. I think you all should resign. I think this is, I'm sure you do nice things in Wommet. The park, the Gilson Park and the beach is the best thing we have, and so I'm very, very upset that you ruined my, you ruined my entire summer and you ruined so many people's summer. Every time I go down, which is very rare now because I'm just too sad, I have seen some horrible incident with a lifeguard and a bunch of people. Yesterday, it was some girls who wanted to go on the beach and play, and they didn't have the $10. It's just heartbreaking. I can't stand to watch it. That's only one thing. I've seen maybe 50, 50 of these incidents. Another one was some Armenian kids who were, they danced every year on the beach because they do the Armenian festival in, in Evanston, where I went to see, because they Instagram me after, because I got them in free. I said, you know, they're not telling you, but you can walk in for, you can walk for free. So, they all got, they were going to pay, have to pay each $10. There were eight of them, that's $80. That's insane. And I also have had heat stroke. I don't intend to get it again. So, if you have the fence up again next year, I will do as I did this year. I will go in wherever I want, and where you harass people who have come in with their children, who are toddlers, trying to get in the water, rinsing them off, and people are screaming at them getting their walkie-talkies, I will go in, I say, okay, I'm going in exactly where you told them they can't go, and I will go in the water right now, and I will submerge because I'm very hot. I'm very hot, and I do not intend to get heat stroked again. This is a travesty. Everything you've done is, is completely horrible. You've trained your people badly, and they're wonderful young people. I teach young people, I know how great they are. So, I've got a song for you because I don't want to go on, and I don't think it's the same thing having a beach that was free and open for 100 or plus years. It was 19, 19, I go, 1911. And then we had a paying beach. We had it settled, it wasn't broke, didn't need to be fixed. So, we were different from other people. We should have stayed that way. It's absolutely heartbreaking. So, this is the song. So, I was saying one last week, I'm going to sing another one. No one on duty in lifeguard chairs that litter the beach, checkpoints and patrolling that keep lake water out of reach, red huge folded umbrellas tossed to the ground. These are a few of my most hated sounds. Trained teenagers saying that they're just following rules. Why does the park district take us for fools? The vista is ruined, and people who came for decades are gone. This is the reason I'm singing this song. Girls turned away for not having $10. Gates close at dusk, and then you get hollered. Kids in their uniforms on walking, walkie-talkies abound. These are a few of my most hated sounds. When the heat bites, when the toddler cries, when you keep out good folk. I simply remember my most hated sounds, and then I start getting heat stroke. Rust of snowdrift fences block out the view.
Right, Anna Stacia, thank you very much.
Disabled and elderly from their cars cry at you.
Thank you, Anna Stacia.
All of the foreign people cannot be found.
Thank you, Anna Stacia.
These are prioritized below sand dune mounds, scrolling on phones and rolling in sand. These are the train booths, and this is the plan. You can walk for free, but H2O is unknown, though. How can you even cool off one toe? When the heat bites, when the toddler cries, when you keep out good folk. I simply remember my most hated sounds, and then I start getting heat stroke.
All right. Patricia?
There's percussion there.
Always the percussion. Very good.
If I had a beat.
Just, I'll do some organi, on another note, I was wondering if the plans have been revised yet to show tree protection at Langdon for all trees that are on my property that need to be protected. I saw an arborist there two days ago. I was wondering, has Smith Group has revised anything?
Okay.
No answer?
Well, when we get to Langdon in the agenda, we will get an update on it. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak before we move on? Jeffrey?
I'd like to address the troubling pattern of misconduct that has become all too common with this board and its leadership. Besides the other debunked excuses for the fence, the board cites, the board cites a persistent narrative of misbehavior among park visitors, yet the police reports simply do not support these claims. It's reminiscent of the false narratives used to justify the Iraq War, where nonexistent weapons of mass destruction were cited as a reason to invade. Similarly, this board is creating a fictional account to justify oppressive and overreaching policies at Gilson Beach. The hypocrisy is staggering. While you attempt to criticize and control the public with these false narratives, the real misconduct is coming from within this very board. We've seen dramatic increases in reports of staff harassing visitors, some shared right here in these meetings, some blatantly violating First Amendment rights of individuals to speak in a public park. This isn't just an isolated issue. The Attorney General, the Attorney General recently determined that this board violated the Open Meetings Act by failing to publish minutes as required by law. In fact, the very meeting where the board directed staff to erect this fence in the first place was in likely violation of the law. We've also seen members of this board engage in egregious behavior, including threatening and blackmailing constituents and sending weird and repeated emails to female residents, making them uncomfortable and concerned for his mental state. And speaking of concerning mental states, one board member openly screamed at constituents, calling them animals and children. And let's not forget the instance where another board member labeled over 1,000 defense Gilson supporters as radicals, a slanderous attack on our community. The park board has been holding a lot of closed-door meetings lately. I recently learned that in such meetings, the park district has illegally discussed matters that are required by law to be discussed in the open. And Steve Wilson has, and that Steve Wilson has openly encouraged illegal meetings outside of Wommet to avoid being caught. Steve Wilson's long-obsessed, observed culture of misconduct and grossly inappropriate behavior has now set the cost taxpayers well over $5 million, a stupidly avoidable burden which this board chose to turn a blind eye to instead favoring Mr. Wilson. It's time for transparency, accountability, and a commitment to the laws that govern us all. The residents of Wommet deserve better than Mr. Wilson, his board and his ugly and mean-spirited fence. Thank you.
I'm Barbara Sokarski. I'm a resident of Wommet, and I just wanted to say I too, like Anastasia, have been sad all summer. I won't go to the beach because I don't want to look at it. And I just want to say that for the last few years, you've put these poor young people in horrible positions by having them impose these draconian rules of irrational draconian rules of not letting adults soak their toes and ankles in water or rinse out baby bottoms. I think probably not all of them, but 80% of conflicts could have been avoided and not escalated if you weren't imposing these awful rules, militaristic rules, and having young kids do that that didn't know how to handle it really. And public beach, I think it's self-explanatory. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to...
Tanya Shabalier.
Sorry, Tanya Shabalier, 789 Michigan Avenue, Wommet. I wanted to speak to an article that came out in the Wommet Life last week that cites what you have all been speaking to, although JP Maximera, the new marketing communications manager, said, spoke about the... manager, said, spoke about the sidewalk width that complies with the Department of Transportation and ADA recommendations. And I want to say to that point that there are at least one entrance into the park that is ADA compliant into and through the park. Secondly, he says that while ADA compliance is a factor, the primary concern is safety. The, for your path that you're going to be putting, assuming that you will be putting through the park on Harbor Drive, increasing the size of Harbor Drive. We are saying that the alternative path that we propose is more safe than what you have proposed, to keep Gilson green. And finally, as far as the trees are concerned, yes, you say you'll only take down two trees that are invasive. There are a number of other invasive bushes trees as well along Harbor Drive, but you haven't mentioned those. And the 358 new trees in the park that you plan on planting, you know, please let us know over which period of time those will be planted because they're not being planted right away. And then, yeah, and then as far as crossing, trail crossing Michigan Avenue, this is absolutely not true in the alternative path that you have put forth. So the increased costs that you described in the alternative path could be alleviated if you do not add the five foot sidewalk for the pedestrians and cyclists. That's you have put in your plans. So I think that's all. Thanks. I'm totally prepared tonight.
Thanks, Tanya. Thank you, Tanya. Is there anybody else that would like to speak at this time? Yes, please.
I'm Connie Steadl. I have a couple of questions. Another point I want to bring up because it's been the issue. And I said at the last meeting that I've been down there many times, photos, I have videos. Lifeguard chairs empty one day, three in a row, and the only lifeguard was the one closest to the Lake Street Beach from the South Beach End. It was 4:30 in the afternoon and I've seen it more than once and I've videoed it more than once. And I asked the staff and they said, well, it's slow, but there are people in the water even though it's slow. So if safety is an issue, as you say, this is kind of going against it and somebody, not a teenager, should be monitoring them. I don't want to have anybody drowning here. And the other thing I just wanted to ask, which I know you probably will answer, but was the unrelated to this, was the lawsuit dismissed today. But you can answer that when you're ready.
All right, thanks, Connie. Was anybody else intent, please?
Yeah, Karen Berry. I live at 421 Langdon and I'm speaking to the fence specifically. This is really personal for me. My husband, who passed away last September, grew up in Willmett at Nathan Elmwood. And in 2013, we were living at 511 Maple. He was diagnosed with Parkinson's disease and his caregivers encouraged him to get as much exercise as possible, saying that that could, there was evidence it would slow the progression. He chose as his exercise to go down to Gilson Park every morning, winter, summer, what didn't matter. And he had a path that he would choose that would bring him through the park and then along the beach, he would jog, sort of, with his Parkinson's, with the rationale that it was, if he was going to fall, it was safer to fall on sand than on a cement sidewalk. More than that, he loved the Gilson Park beach. He never went in the water. When our grandchildren were in from out of town, he would get them up early in the morning to go down and watch the sunrise and then go to Dunkin' Donuts. It was a ritual that all of our grandchildren, you know, came to love about grandpa. And until he could not eventually, I had to place him in residential care two and a half years ago, so at that point he couldn't access the beach anymore. But I, it just grieves me to think, first of all, I think the fence is ugly. I don't like even driving past it. I cannot see the lake. I just, I just think he would be brokenhearted to see this fence or to think of any type of permanent fence being put out. I agree that there are safety issues. I know those are concerns. I would like to think there's another way to address those, but on fence is my opinion.
Thank you. Anna Stacia Royal, I'm going to close up a comment. Thank you all very much for your input. And we're gonna move on to number four in our agenda, old business. So we have a third park update.
All right. So we went back to Upland and we started to dive deeper into some of the numbers in regards to some of the park improvements. So one notable thing is that the basketball games and the painted games is about $20,000 lower than what it was when we presented last time, and there was an error in the spreadsheet. So that's the same exact thing that we proposed when we did the presentation at the August board meeting. We've provided a couple of options to make the picnic shelter smaller. The smallest size that you can go to is 16 by 16 to comply with the requirements of the grant. And a 16 by 16 picnic pavilion would fit about four picnic tables. And that would be lowered to about $98,000 if it was 16 by 16.
Kristy, by comparison, community playfields can fit six, right?
And it's substantially bigger because you've got doors that open up and walkways and we have a five foot concrete perimeter around it. I knew somebody was gonna ask that, so I've got it right here. And it is 37 feet by 23 feet.
Good perspective.
And what about the one at Gilson, do you know?
Those I do not.
That's big.
They're huge.
Much bigger.
Yeah.
And what's, what does staff feel would be, like, is four sufficient? Can you get six tables under 20 by 20?
Well, what Maria and I were talking about is, these are obviously estimates. They could come in lower, they could come in higher. So we thought that maybe we would do it as a alternate. You start the project with 16 by 16, see what price you get for that picnic shelter and then ask for a 20 by 20 and a 20 by 30. And as we're gathering all of the costs for the entire project, we could determine if the 16 by 16 is what we can afford or maybe we can afford the 20 by 30.
The camps, I should ask this, is it the camp programming that's driving the desire for the outdoor structure there?
No, I think baseball has also expressed that they like it, but the campers do use it. I think it would be nice for moms or dads at the playground having a place to sit and still being able to see the playground while they're there.
So with that and camp, I just remember with that community playfields, we, it was really recommended, like, we need to be able to fit six. So that's my question. What do you need there?
Right. Dave, what's your opinion?
I mean, I think, I almost feel like the smaller version just doesn't really meet anyone's needs. It's a compromise. It's just like, it's here, but it's not the right tool. I think the bigger option is.
One of the, sorry.
Now, just to clarify, there's 16 by 16, 20 by 20, and 20 by 30. So you're saying that only the biggest or the middle one as well? I don't, when you said bigger and smaller, I just try to understand.
I mean, from a camp perspective, which is like the biggest need that we would have from a programming standpoint, 20 by 30 would be ideal, right? Anything.
So what do the kids, can you remind me, can you remind me what camps we have there?
Yeah. Well, currently Arts in the Parks is there, Summers in Camp is there, people, other camps come there for other activities. We put up, we have put up a temporary tent there. Initially, we had them on the north side of the field, but it was too far for our campers to go. Plus it was a treacherous trek with all the cicadas around, so they wanted something closer. So when we took that down, we moved it closer and that became the hub of where people would check in and check out. It was a little refuge from sun and whatever.
But that's not where this pavilion's proposed to go, where you moved the tent to.
No, no.
Very close though. They're in the same exact area. So it's right behind where the new location, the tent that's up right now, we're just a little further north, more centrally located.
So not gonna, if in another 13 or 19 years, have cicada issue when the kids get into this new pavilion?
I, no, we will not.
One reason, the community playfields, the pavilion there is like the only shade, I mean, other than there's some trees. So if it's like raining and you're, you're playing soccer or playing baseball and it starts to pour, that's the only place you have to, you have to go. I mean, I guess one thing with Hibbert, so you've got the huge CRC right there where, you know, where you're saying even like for campers, I mean, there's a place for campers to go to, whereas like community playfield's big, but that's the only, the only place where you can get any protection from.
But to be fair, Cecilia, we used to stand under the eve at the, at the school.
Yeah, I mean, you could, but you couldn't, you know, you can't go to, even the schools are, you can't go into the schools on Saturdays, you know, there's the, or after school, you know, after five o'clock or after three o'clock. So that's like the only, that was the only protection you could have from the elements. Whereas I feel like Hibbert Park, there are many other, and if we're talking about, I think the baseball having the shaded area, we, there's, there's a lot more places for you to take cover in case of inclement weather or if it's never hot. So I, I don't know, I guess I'm, you know, partly thinking that, do we really need a huge pavilion there?
Did you say, do we really need a huge pavilion?
Yeah, I mean, maybe I'm wrong, maybe, you know.
Did you say, do we really need?
Do we really need the big one or can we go, because there are other opportunities and it's, you know, other opportunities to take refuge from, from bad water.
Can I, so I just, I wanna, let's take a step back. Last meeting, we talked about priorities that was based on the survey, right? So there was like one, two, three. Can you remind us what those priorities were?
I did not plan for that one.
Because, because as we look at what you've taken out and put in and changed, you know, let's keep in mind what the survey asked for. You know, and what stimulated that thought was the fitness area, right? Sorry.
We also talked about, we also talked about having the numbers of individual components which scored points for the grant. So in my notes from last time, like I had that one flagged, that the, that was considered an amenity that scored us a point. So that.
I just want to go back to priorities. You know, let's make sure that we're not eliminating something that was a priority of the survey. It is long, you know, as we fit it in, that's great, that's what we want to try and strive to do and I just want to come back to that for a second.
So I said, ugh, kind of for the same reasons Cecilia thinks that there might be other opportunities for shelter because there is an entire fitness center inside Sears. So I, I really would have, that, that is $114,000, $114,000 we could redistribute if I could pull people away from the outdoor fitness facility.
So was that a priority in what it is?
No, so in the first survey, the number one priority was natural area additions.
Right.
Then number two was connecting existing paths.
Correct.
Number three was accessibility updates. And number four was outdoor fitness.
Sometimes can't, you know, they're not looking at the cost.
And number six was a pavilion.
Okay. Remind me, how many people responded?
32. That was out of.
600.
Ranging from 600 to 900.
And remember that a third of the people do not go to the, do not go there ever.
Right. So. So I mean, our, the survey, the survey's great and it's helpful, but it's our job to kind of put all the information together with the survey. And I think I would say to someone, outdoor fitness equipment is great, but at the cost we're talking about and the relative location of the indoor fitness facility and the other amenities we're proposing, like I personally would love to see the larger pavilion, we can talk about that block, you know, but also the, what did I have, the concrete instead of the asphalt. And you can start to make those, those switches if you, if you do make some sacrifices and if, you know, if fitness, outdoor fitness was number one by a large way, I would probably struggle with it, but I think, I think for me at least, I think if we could start with one place, does that hurt us on the score?
No, I think as long as we have five good options, which I think we still do, we're at like eight or nine with a couple of areas within the playground and then the natural area, pickleball, moving the pass.
For the outdoor fitness, for example, you were including almost like, you know, machines, but they're like the, like elliptical.
That was cool.
You know, but I know, but, but I'm like, I guess I'm more like the traditional, the outdoor fitness, get the, you know, the bar, the chin up bar, get the plank, get the, you know, like what's at Gilson, you know, it's, there's, there's other outdoor fitness items that don't have to be as fancy as a bicycle and, you know, and I, I don't know, I know you said it's will withstand all the elements, I still, I'm kind of leery about that. So, I mean, I, I, cause, you know, just having sort of your.
I think that's an interesting thing to think about, similarly to putting a couple alternatives with the pavilion size, maybe shopping some lower cost fitness equipment that still gets us that amenity and the point. I recall, I don't remember if they brought it to us or via Kristy, I remember at some point of conversation around that, that because the fitness center is inside, that there was a synergy, some of those instructors do take their classes outside and now they have that right there. I know years back, this was pre-COVID, obviously during COVID it was all outside, but even well before COVID, there were some classes I remember attending where we ran up and down the hills that were kind of where the new baseball berm is. And there were, there are groups that do that. And so having at a minimum some of these chin up bars and things that they can work with, I think we have creative instructors at the fitness club.
And to that end, that's why Maria, when she was presenting at the board meeting, said that this is what was surveyed to the public, but staff input is needed because our staff has definitely said an elliptical doesn't help create a circuit for a class as much as maybe a different piece of equipment. So she definitely wanted to leave the door open for alterations and nothing has to be married to anything that was surveyed.
So to Cecilia's point, maybe that makes it cheaper.
You have to approve whether you're gonna include it or not.
But, but the cost, the estimate's related to this equipment that you're saying staff may not want, so then.
But the staff, but the number could move, just like, you know, we could, we could put together, just like we were talking about with the pavilion, we first decide whether pavilion's in or out. Then it's, we can do, give options in the bid process, the 16 by 16, 20 by 20, you know, things like that, and then make a decision at that time. But what we have to decide is whether fitness equipment or a pavilion or any of this is in or out.
So what, give me our timetable on when this has to be done right now. Like when?
Next week.
It's like today.
I know.
Yeah. To say that fitness equipment is in, but we're approving this and then we don't, you know.
The grant is being actively worked on right now. Like we're not just waiting for you guys to make decisions today. So the final submittal date is September 13th, which is a Friday at 5:00 PM. We would like to have as much info as possible this week so we can continue to develop a robust submittal. So we're really looking for some direction this evening on what we're including in that scope of work. But again, we're working, you know, get to the letter from our attorney, we have the resolution, we've started the backend of the grant paperwork, so we have a lot of the process moving right now.
Do you want to walk us through the rest with your recommendation and then we go on?
Yeah, or though, before we do that, can I just ask one question? Cause you have the, two, one, an ADA water fountain and then, or alternatively renovate the existing fountain. Would the ADA, because you were talking about putting it in another location, would be in the same place where the existing one is?
Correct. So the $10,000 is to replace the existing water fountain in its current location. I think that that should happen no matter what. Right. So I looked up in our ADA transition plan from 2018, recommended that we replace that water fountain.
I mean, I do.
Because it, right.
I definitely think if you're gonna replace that water fountain, it should be ADA.
Absolutely, absolutely.
But the new, when you have the new ADA water fountain, is that the one in a different location?
Right, that's the one where we were moving it more, so the cost is much higher because of the infrastructure work, moving water lines.
10,000 is the fountain, 50 grand is the relocation.
Correct. And the concrete that's associated with it, right?
Yeah, I would, I would leave it at where it is.
And what other question I think we asked you last time? When, when are the baseball backstops due for replacement?
So that's a great question. They were put in 20 years ago. They were put in 20 years ago and per the DNRs, they have a manual and at the end they give you a useful life criteria. Their expectation for baseball fields is eight to 10 years. So we have maxed out, in my opinion, our baseball fields. I have some pictures if anybody wants to look at them, they're rusted, they have broken metal pieces that probably are not great to have on a ballfield fence with a young, bunch of young kids. They need, they don't have enclosures, there's not a lot of safety that's associated with the dugouts. We do have little like enclosures for the batter up or the one on deck to swing the bat within, so that was added.
That one field, not both?
I'm pretty sure it's that one field.
Oh, it's that both, okay.
Mm-hmm.
It is, you're right, I'm sorry.
So would that be the, an item counted if we were to include something like that as opposed to a different option that's on this list?
Right, so, yes. So the, so the playground right now with these splay, the, the spray pad, the playground and the picnic shelter within there, that complies with three of the five. So then we have pickleball, we have a potential outdoor fitness, the batting cage, looping the trails, the natural area, the baseball fields, ADA, so we have way more than five right now. I think the more that we have makes, again, our grant more robust, more appealing, but the bottom line is five. That's the lowest we can go.
So, I'm sorry to ask you this, but have you any idea what it would cost to replace the backstops and all that work? That is 20 years or 10 years past its quote unquote.
This cost is every fence out there.
There's, there on the, you mean other than?
You're saying the, but that's batting cage improvements?
No, this is the entire ball.
Ball field improvements are the backstop and the dugouts.
Okay.
That's everything. It's adding concrete to the existing pads so we can move the players' bench away from the spectator bench. It's adding the, the shade above it, which we looked at, different options for that and we felt more comfortable with this number here of the original plan. So at West Park, we have, let's say, a 10-foot fence and an eight-foot fence and then an angled shade structure above it. Right now, we're proposing like maybe five or six feet fence around the dugout, so the cost that we would have in increasing the fence to put a cheaper shade structure did not give us a savings, because fencing is crazy expensive. So that's why we didn't change anything with the ballfield improvements. We feel that if we're going in this avenue, this is the best approach.
So hypothetically, if we did something like pickle, big pavilion, renovate the existing fountain, six foot, sorry, the concrete connection, one pollinator garden, the north baseball field, the tot lot, the basketball and painted games, is there any, can all those happen or is, does like the splash pad need to happen with the painted games or, so that's eight units?
You basically described option three without the second south baseball field improvements with a couple of upgrades, with a bigger pavilion with a, so.
So it's option three with things I like. That comes out to 1.46. But.
But the baseball field still has to get done, is your point?
Right.
It's just we wouldn't have to have it be a part of the grant, we could have it.
Right, I, so I did reach out to the baseball association just to get, is there a different field of play? Do we program more on the north field? And they said they program the fields equally, it's the same field of play. They would be a huge supporter of getting both fields completed within this grant.
Of course.
You always feel let down when you get programmed on the south field.
Right.
So what's our contract with them right now? I mean, is this?
We pay them.
We pay them to run the baseball camps or baseball programs?
The house for us.
I'm not a part of that, I just do the bands, so.
So they.
They maintain the fields for us.
They pay an external landscape company to do the maintenance of the fields and we reimburse up to a cap dollar amount.
And then do they also, do we get any of the money that they then charge for baseball?
For one program, there's an intro to baseball program, which is like the first program a kid would do, they act as our independent contractor.
And so then how many other programs are there that we don't benefit from that they use our facilities for?
I don't know exactly the number of programs, but the answer is all of them.
Which would be 10, 20?
Well, it's basically from second grade, maybe even first grade up until eighth grade.
Maybe we should be asking for a contribution.
I'm totally comfortable with asking them for something like that.
Because, I mean, you know.
Especially not at batting games or.
So, so, and this goes to kind of, we had the conversation, I don't know if it was offline between just you and me or if I brought it up during the meeting, but when we were doing the lease with the restaurant at the golf course, you know, we paid for all those improvements. And when I'm doing, you know, commercial real estate leases, now the tenant pays for those improvements, they get some free rent in lieu of some of the capital improvements that they make to the property, but the decorating improvements kind of come out of their pocket. We paid for all that. And that's, you know, so I would like to see some of these programs that are benefiting from our facilities and our taxpayer dollars and granted some of our kids from the community go, but they should, they should help defer some of the costs.
And philosophically, I agree with that. For me, the bigger issue is that we give them the turf field for free, which we could generate substantial revenue on.
West Park?
West Park. That, I know that from my involvement with a nonprofit board, what, what they pay for the Winnetka fields and the revenue that Winnetka generates on their fields is substantially higher than us. And I suspect a lot of it has to do with a lot of this sort of program for free. That's something I've always been interested in, taking a look at how we monetize that field, because we have significant expenses. Every eight years, we have to spend a half, half million dollars kind of redoing the pellets or something along those lines, and I'm not sure we recover that. So I think it's worth looking.
To kind of herd everyone back, right?
Yes, let's go back to this.
We have until next Friday to turn this in, so I don't really know if we, so the decision.
Two Fridays from now.
Two Fridays from now.
So I was talking about the suggestion you made.
Here's, here's what I think, if we said, I think recalling what we were talking about last time, Christie, where it's like we could list these items as things we are going to undertake and then make changes on the fly, we're not committed to them wholesale, correct?
Until the grant is submitted.
Once it's submitted and in the grant, we have to complete, that's why the picnic pavilion can be a range of options, but we are committing to putting a picnic pavilion within the park.
And in the same way, on the Fed's saying, as long as we do one baseball backstop, it qualifies, we can decide whether or not to do something.
See where I'm going with this, we could do one and have them try and raise money for the second, because we get the, we get the, we commit to one, we get the credit. And then we can have whatever you want, we have the plans or whatever and we can proceed to do that in the future, but for the purposes of the grant in front of us, I think we commit to one and we say, if you guys can come up with another 162, we'll try and do the other one, otherwise it, it goes on our schedule, which is being pulled in 20 different directions. That's kind of where I was at, I don't know, I'm team anti-splash pad, so I didn't want to like just throw that out.
I'm splash pad in a different location, like I said last time. This location at the preschool, it's only turned on a handful of times a year, so it's not, it is absolutely a great, I would not want money to be spent in that location for splash pad.
And then the other question, sorry, you're, I just jumped all over it.
I'm finished, thank you.
It's a little cold over here. Can you explain to me, Christie, the difference between the six, the concrete and asphalt?
Yeah.
Like what, why am I so just excited to do concrete over asphalt?
Think of alleyways around our neighborhood.
Right.
And think of the new concrete ones and then think of the asphalt fill that they put in to plug the holes, which one do you rather?
Concrete's sturdier and lasts better.
Christie, is that your opinion?
I would prefer concrete, but I wanted to give you all options so you knew that there is other options. I mean, I was even gonna throw in the red granite soft surface that we use at other areas, which would be a lower cost, I just didn't know how it would look.
Does it have to be red?
Yeah, we've hit red.
The answer is no, it doesn't have to be red.
I actually like it, but we are just not vibing to it.
You too.
Especially at a lower, especially at a lower cost, but if the preference is, and there's a longer use they like for that, then I would.
I observed that asphalt is two feet wider, that makes me guess that the machinery or that's the minimum you can do in asphalt.
Right, so you have to bring out an eight-foot piece of equipment, so we either are paving either side or doing some research or renovating of the turf and it never goes very well.
Yeah, so that's another strike besides the ugly longevity of asphalt. So for the price difference in those two, I was still squarely in team concrete for that one.
Sounds like most people are.
All right, I like that, team concrete.
The tot lot.
Can we get shirts?
Yes, like the burn boss.
That's what we're doing with the fitness center before I commit to a shirt.
The tot lot, I mean, obviously this is used for early childhood, there's a lot of stuff going on with it, but we typically spend substantially less on our tot lots, is that correct?
This is an expensive tot lot.
This is the shade, it's the shade structure.
I understand, I'm just wondering if there's any opportunity for any savings there without compromising the integrity of the plan, because it is a big number.
You could take out the splash pad renovation.
Well, that's a separate line.
We're looking at options, so it's our call.
So it is the pour-in-play, which we haven't done in several years, which increases the cost, and I don't think that mulch is the right move for this area. So I think that that's a non-negotiating, but there is a placeholder for a, the perimeter fence. I mean, we can probably push that out, it's not in the best shape, but it's also not in the worst shape. We were just proposing to do it with the project, we might be able to get some more life out of that and that would be, I think I might have that number, let me just, I've got so many emails back and forth.
But I know we gave you some guidance about kind of the overall number before and I understand there's some logic to this, that if we expect the grant to be 600,000 and they like, they, you need to, it can't be more than 50%, but I know they like it to be a 1.5x, so 600, 900, now we got our 1.5 million, I get all the numbers, but I think it's also worth noting, as we talked about last meeting, that we haven't gone through our capital planning yet. And my guess is, absent of this grant, this wasn't necessarily our number one priority for the coming year and we're sort of putting this ahead of everything else and we all support that, because we love to get this grant. But I'd really like to see us, if the 1.5x is an estimate, 1x is what's required, I'd really like to see us stick to that 1.5 number, maybe a little bit lower around, kind of back to Patrick's point, I don't want to see, I don't want to see a plan that's over 1.5 because we are obviously making a lot of decisions about our capital plan without going through the capital planning process and that makes me uncomfortable.
Well, pickle would have been in the, though.
I was guessing.
So pickle.
Pickle's in this year's capital plan.
Right, pickle was, right, so, so then you're talking about if you do get the grant, you know, you're, you're really in business, right?
Yeah, so I support the plan, I just, I'd like to keep it really tight.
Well, and then I would say that there's elements like the, the baseball fields, like if their useful life's 22 years and it's 20 years, it's prudent to think that if we have a shot at paying for a third of it or two-thirds of it, that we should do it. And, I mean, I, I wasn't sure about the pavilion because it doesn't feel like it would be on the capital plan, I wasn't sure about, I felt like the paths.
So the pavilion was on the plan in 2020.
I was in here.
So we were, we pulled it that year for obvious reasons, but it was already approved and within our capital plan for 2020 to put a picnic shelter.
We're gonna go there, we got a lot to do.
So also, another thing to keep in mind is, we did do comprehensive planning.
Yeah.
We did surveys.
Yep.
Lindsay just put that back in front of me, outdoor amenities, you know, picnic shelters was above the middle, but fitness equipment was almost at the bottom in many ways. So as, as we think about it and think about what the, the public feedback was about the priorities of the district, it's right there in the numbers.
Well, and I think the pollinator garden fits in the priorities of the district, at least kind of anecdotally into some of the village.
Yeah, second nature.
The path is something that, you know, I have blasted on the path, but it is something people want. And, you know, the batting cage improvements don't make a ton of sense to me, but I think we talked about that last time. And then I agree, the tot lot is expensive, but it's heavily used and the foam or whatever, all this stuff makes sense to me. I just, I had a question about the pavilion, seems to have been answered. I railroaded the fitness center thing and I, does anyone really want that or Kara, Kara does, I know.
Yeah, I mean, I guess like if, if it's more simpler equipment, not, not the, like more fancy one, I, I think it, as you say, with instructors going out there, I think it's, that's, it's good to use. I mean, there used to be, there used to be some outdoor, at, at community play fields, those got taken away, now it's just like at Gilson, so it doesn't really hurt, it, it's kind of nice to have some of that equipment to give some options.
But not at a 150.
No, no, but I would, but I would do much simpler, I mean, it would be the much more like just benches and a couple of chin-up bars and I can't.
Just because we don't put it on this project in this application, doesn't mean we don't plan for it at some point in the future.
And that's kind of the thing about it, is like if we commit to it and we don't get the grant, then all of a sudden we're really doing these things that aren't necessarily, like the fitness center didn't feel like it meshed with the plan and, and so that's how I came down, that's how I, I actually was lazy, didn't add it up till right now.
But so picking back up to, to your comment, if we start at option three as a baseline and we have the pavilion as option A, B, and C, pickleball courts, kind of that number is what it is.
Concrete.
The existing fountain, not the relocation with concrete instead of asphalt, only one baseball backstop and.
Pollinator.
And the pollinator, of course. You know, then maybe there's still something for a more modest fitness, outdoor fitness equipment, so that sort of get an extra number on our thing and still kind of keep it at that high 1.4s to 1.5 kind of range.
Inclusive of the tot lot.
So what if we did the tot lot and the perimeter fence was an alternative similar to the picnic pavilion? So we can see what the price would come in and yes, we want to do it, because it's, that's not a part of why we're getting those three components within the grant. So that could be easily something we can look at extending its life.
And even if they award us the grant, then when we go to bid, we can choose at that time to add, we just can't take away. So we cannot plant the fence, when we, if we get the grant, we can add the bin in, if not, we haven't overcommitted. I felt, I felt that the woman from Upland was strongly encouraging more points was more better with these like chances of getting the grant.
I agree.
And so for about half the cost, if we can find a skinny downed fitness equipment, I was hearing that that was like one of the things that, maybe I was hearing it from you back a long time ago, I don't remember, but I remember in my mind, I'm not personally that attached, I don't use them, I can appreciate that people will, because I've seen it happen, but it was checking the box and there are a good amount of folks that just walk around that park, as there are other places in our parks where people walk, but on a regular basis, you just see people circling the loop, so certainly that connection will be nice, but I can appreciate that the types of individuals that I see circling that loop probably don't go up into the gym, even though there's a walking track up there too, they like being outside. And they, you know, in other places I've traveled where I do see those things, they sort of match the same demographic of the people I see using the equipment and I just wonder if that would be a welcomed amenity, I can't predict it, but.
Christie, does signage, if we were to have signage around that loop, and I, I've probably texted Steve a handful of times asking, how many times around Vatman is a mile? You know, like, if we have signage up that shows, you know, whatever, two times around that loop, is, would that count as like an outdoor fitness?
I will ask, I definitely know that.
I love the idea, in either way, it encourages people to have a motivation to.
Yeah, yeah, no, community has it, that's my view.
Yeah, let's do it at Vatman and there.
I would love that.
So I would, I would like to ask about the, the pollinator garden, the rain garden that got cut in half.
What about?
Are we doing it, is it just, it, well, in the diagram, I remember it being all along the side of the park.
Right, correct. So the sidewalk that we're proposing, the gardens on either side of that would remain, but we had expanded it to the east side of the skate park. And after we revisited the site, we decided that the grasses were pretty well established there and to help us get down to a lower number, we cut that number in half excluding the skate park area. So we'll be adding two new gardens on either side of the sidewalk and then we'll just continue to reevaluate the other area.
How does this fit with our landscape plan for that park?
That's a great question. Let me see. So we're talking about just keeping this small section?
That's what it sounds like. Not going all the way to the north. Yeah, north of the stuff.
It probably is not on the landscape plan because the sidewalk didn't exist.
But again, the landscape plan didn't call for a rain garden anywhere in the park.
That's what they're...
So if we don't plan for a rain garden, but we execute some of our landscape plan, does that count? You know what I'm saying? Because now...
That's a good question.
As a land...as a...we created a garden, but if we just execute part of the landscape plan.
Interpretive signage, native plantings. We just accomplished those, right?
But if it's not part of the landscape plan, right? I mean, we went through that exercise for a reason. It's a good one.
So we've already completed a lot of the plan. At the entrances of the buildings, we added the plantings by the playground. We could see if we could add more into that area to see if that could be included as the natural area. I mean, these pictures are actually like night and day of what the park looks like right now. It's pretty spectacular.
So how much of that plan have you actually...
Yeah.
I don't like that, too. I think I heard something crack over there.
Yeah.
Is it your elbow giving it?
I only do it like once a year, so I'm not used to it.
So how much...so a lot of that plan has been executed already?
It has. Let me...this is a good question for Maria. Let me see what she says about that.
All right. Appreciate it.
All right. I interrupted.
I'm good.
I just wanted to get back to the guidance we're giving you tonight, right?
Yeah.
It's pickleball courts, ABC pavilion. Mike's repeated this. Renovate drinking fountain, concrete path. Are we all on board with the pollinator garden? We're looking into...
We're looking into that right now.
That, right. But it has to be listed.
We're looking into doing something that qualifies. If this is one that's great, if there's something else that qualifies, that's great, too.
Right. Right.
Fitness area, are we looking into that?
That number can change.
So but it's gonna be...
We're looking to do a more not modest number.
So it's gonna...okay. I would be for getting rid of it. I think everybody knows that. If you guys want to keep it in, that's fine. A baseball field, no.
A baseball field.
No batting cages.
Yep.
Playground.
Renovation with an option for the fence.
Renovation option for fence, no splash pad.
And no basketball playing games, right? No, I think we were gonna do that because I already went down from...
And that, something Maria and I talked about, is that that might be something we could do in-house, which could save us on the labor for that. There still is, which I couldn't believe, like $5,000 in getting the actual, like, outline and the paint for it. But we would be able to lower this number if that was something we could do in-house, which I'm very confident that's something we could do.
But still score points, right? Because I'm just talking about scoring points.
Correct. Correct.
Okay. You know, that's the guidance they wanted, and that one...
Score five, six, seven. That still gets us eight points.
I'm good with that. I guess, yeah, correct.
And then one more thing, Christie. It's a longer conversation for another day, how you go about bidding this. Because we've got plenty of time to figure it out, but for example, is it in our best interest to try to find one contract that's going to do the whole thing? Or if we've got certain people that just do tot lots, have them did that and have something else. I mean, our construction costs have been going up, up, up. We're really interested in ways that we can...
Right. And I want to figure out how...because I don't want the tot lot to be down as long as the remainder of the project.
Sure. So it might make sense to bid it.
So maybe it is that route. Maybe it's two separate permits, the same contractor. So it's something we're gonna have to explore during the next phase of the project. But yeah, I don't want the batting cages, or sorry, the baseball fields to hold back the tot lot from being opened for a major program. So yeah, we're gonna look into that and explore all of our options. I just don't know what we can and can't do. I don't think there's any...
And we can talk about why not. I just wanted to point that out. Yep. Sounds good.
All right. Can I just read back what I think I got?
Yeah, it's gonna be the same thing.
All right. You...
But let's see if you and I are on the same page before this. So included: pickle, pavilion, drinking fountain, connective path, pollinator garden if it's not already fulfilled by some other landscape plan element, baseball field north only, and tot lot without splash pad.
And the basketball and painting games.
But that's in the tot lot.
No, they're listed.
But that's in the front of one.
Oh, the tot lot without the splash pad.
We want the basketball and painted games, but we might be able to do those in-house. And then, sorry, we finding signs. I'm figuring out if that gives us a component and what that additional cost would be. But I...it can't be that expensive compared to everything else that we've talked through.
Sounds great.
Anecdotally, the picture we had last time from Maria with the interpretive signage is like one of those sort of big, everything-in-ones bulletin boards. I have appreciated other places near our library. We have just the little black signs that tell you what the plant is. I noticed in Wenacut, I don't know which Wenacut's downtown, because there's so many downtowns, but one where I went out to dinner last weekend had the same thing. The little...they have a nice little Dwyer Park in front of that. They have a nice little signage in front of their natural space. But they're just the little black ones. Just if you're curious what that plant is, you can learn. I don't know if that counts, but they feel like they'd be less expensive than the large one and maybe even more useful. So if that fits into the landscape plan, but we already have landscaping.
And Alyssa applied for a totally separate grant. It's the coastal grants, and we were awarded it for signage. Yeah, so we're going to be doing interpretive signage at Langdon and Gilson. So she was awarded that in June, and then that will coincide with the completion of the projects. We'll be able to put interpretive signs out there. Yeah, so she was awarded $1,700.
I think that's...and I think that will really be a good difference. I mean, I see these signs everywhere else I go, and they're really very helpful.
Right.
So I, you know, this has been about 12 years now, but the Helmut Doons project, we got about $10,000 from ComEd just for doing the signs there, and it didn't cost us 10 grand for the signs. So I don't know, is that a similar grant that we can apply for as the district, or because we were this other entity that was...
No, we absolutely, we've applied for ComEd. We made grants for their outdoor grants also. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this, or ready to move on?
We got it done.
All right. Thanks again. All right. Next thing we're on, you were gonna do this, so what kind of funding to answer questions? There's so few people that are here, but are you gonna do that tonight or are you gonna move on and not do it tonight? Well, all right. So the question about Langdon, what's...
I already whispered in her ear, so she's got her answer.
Okay, good. Yeah. So new business is 5.1 is financial update. What I'd like to do is make an announcement real quick. I think what the board has, I don't know, we've agreed to, but there's been a discussion just individually with Steve, with Sheila, and we're gonna start having a financial committee meeting, 6:30 on Monday prior to our board meetings. So as we head into the whole finance of the budget process, so that we can all just talk about it. And so it's gonna be 6:30 to 7:00, or 6:30 to whatever we need prior. But it's a hard stop at like 7:30, 7:25, and then we'll start our board meeting. Okay? We're talking with our legal counsel. It's another committee of the whole, but it's gonna focus on financial related issues. Yes. All right. Great. All right. So we'll move on. 5.1, July, the financial update. That would be Sheila, by the way.
I'll just give you the high-level summary. Projections were finished this morning. I have not...
Could you speak up to some of that, please?
I said projections. Nobody ever says that to me. So projections were finished sometime this morning. I have not had any time to vet it. I was out on last week, and I'm still trying to catch up. I need a couple of days to kind of look through it, see if it makes sense, and make sure the signs are going the right way. I just want to have like a pretty decent number for you before we publish it. So I need a couple of days. Okay? The explanations that I want to talk to you about, we're looking at a $12 million worth of actuals here today versus a $2.5 million...I'm trying to get my email that I sent you off. The, you know, there's a few pieces to this, that big pieces that are, you know, part of why we have such a big variance of almost 10 million bucks. A million and a half is related to property taxes. We're gonna carry that variance, and we're gonna...it's probably gonna get bigger until it fixes itself in November and December because I just, you know...
Based on past practice.
Yeah. I just, I spin the spanking wheel, and this was the month that came up this year. So...and initially, what I was doing was just splitting it 1/12, and nobody liked that. And so then I'm trying to target the months, and I can't get the months straight. So just know that that number that you see for the budget, we will be collecting pretty close to, or at least within 2% of, because we roughly collect about 98-point-something percent of the property taxes that we're letting. Okay? The next piece would obviously is related to the proceeds, not part of the budget process. I have increased...well, we can talk about capital, what's happening with capital there. But there's also a million or so that's underspent in capital, but I do not have any indication that we will not spend capital. Do you think that's gonna be the case? But I think we probably need to talk about pickleball because I'm thinking that part of that's gonna move to next year now, based on the conversation we just had about 10 minutes ago. So I guess we'll talk about that. Right now, we're about a million and a...a little over a million behind. The...I don't know. Like I said, I don't know projection-wise. Where are we coming in? Right? We'll have to add another, and we can keep looking back versus the budget. And we can have some more fruitful discussions, probably at the first finance committee of the whole meeting, or, you know, if we catch each other, like, the millions, we can have a chat about it then. You know, I'm just kidding. So that's kind of, you know, most of the variance that we have. I don't know if anybody has any questions. All right? You know, and I am capturing, you know, stuff that wasn't part of the budget, you know, or deferred renovation. There's also the bond issue and expenses that were not part of the original budget. I'm thinking the amended BNA will probably have you guys vote on that maybe next month or the month after. I want to see what we close 3220 at, and then I'll be able to do an amended BNA so that the auditors don't hang on hot plate when we have our audit next year.
What do you expect to come out this coming week?
Yeah.
So for any of you that didn't catch that, Beth Hillel, the purchase is closing.
Beth Hillel? It wasn't good?
Beth Hillel. Yeah, AKA.
So I have those numbers together and talk about the amended BNA. Hopefully, there won't be any surprises in that. She'll know what all these big pieces are that weren't part of the budget, and I'll let you know what's happening with that. You'll vote, you'll sign, you'll file with the county. It'll be a lot of fun. All right? Anybody have any questions on the images?
Not on July, right? No questions on July.
Are there questions on June?
So I wrote a note because we'll start talking about capital in a second. And my question is about, during the process of the strategic plan, the comprehensive plan, we did a comprehensive review of all our facilities, or at least that's what we understood as the board, or I understood as a board member. I shouldn't say it's for the whole board. But we haven't seen anything about the facility review. You know, is CRC past its expected life? Is Centennial recommended to start investing money here or there? This is, you know, impacting our capital planning, and we'd love to see some detailed feedback about that. I know we got a kind of a bird's-eye view of it during the presentation, but we haven't seen any details. And we're walking into capital plan, and I would expect our consultants that we hired had to have put together something for us because it was requested.
Do we have that?
I don't know if we have the level of detail that you're thinking. I think that high-level grading of the facilities, it wasn't...this model number indicates it's this year of an HVAC unit and therefore should be replaced. Christie mostly has that information.
But what I'm talking about, like, is...
The committee. Did the committee vote?
Yeah. We were gonna get more detail at some point as a part of that process, and we'd like to at least see what it was. Not necessarily like the HVAC units, but hey, you know, the tennis facility needs, you know, so much structural renovation to continue its...or to extend its expected life, similar to how we've relined the pools, you know? That's what I was expecting to see out of some of this review that we had in the process of the comprehensive plan and the strategic plan. Because as you look at, you know, the way it was, you know, this is one is a short-term view and one's a longer-term view, right? And we can modify things as we move along. Well, that includes facilities. So I was expecting to get some feedback on that more than the level that we got in that initial presentation.
I think we're gonna have to go back to Woodhouse Tenucci, who did that evaluation, and see what more detail they can provide.
That'd be...I mean...
Yeah, totally understand. I agree. Yep.
I have a tough, odd question. If...can I leave and come back? I have gotten some things from home. Everybody's hit safe and healthy, but in a perfect world, I'd be able to leave and come back.
Yes.
Would I break the quorum, or can we continue?
No. No. Stay above a quorum.
I'll be back.
This is not a voting session.
Pat, do you need a card?
I have my card.
Oh.
Yeah.
So maybe what we do is we have a chat with Andy and then get his input for the capital plan that we plan to publish and discuss end of September. Is that in the budget memo, it'll be end of September for capital? And then we have chats about that? Because we're gonna put together all the things we want to do for capital, so you all can vote on what we will be doing for capital.
Well, I mean, I don't expect us to have to do any, you know, major renovations to a building in the coming year.
No, but it's very helpful.
But, you know, five years down the road, if we gotta put some placeholders in.
It's a five-year plan, right?
I was under the very clear understanding that the...after the strategic plan, you were forming some internal committees, various committees, because you had that super meeting with Barry Dunn that was sort of the end of the strategic plan to sort of chart how to go forward.
Correct.
Right? And then I had asked how, you know, that had to inform the budget process. That's like the one and only thing I always would hear at the conference when they would talk about strategic plans. They would talk about you have to always look at them before you do your budgeting and your planning. So I think I'm hearing these questions coming from the same place. We're all looking for that direction ahead of the budgets, which you're telling us are coming soon.
So when Danny, when Barry Dunn provided us with our final action plan document, what they have in their cost category are dollar signs. There's $1 sign, up to $5 signs. And that's how they estimated a cost for something. So they said this is on the lower end versus this is on the higher end. When our committee meets on Wednesday, one of the things we're going to be going over is the first year's work plan, as well as the next five years, and saying what items are within that plan. Is this still attainable? Do we still think that we can do all of these items within five years, reordering them, and then bringing them back to the department heads to say, this is what we have, this is what we've come up with? The part that they didn't necessarily...we went with Hitchcock last week, and Hitchcock provided a lot of extra detail and said they were going to go back even for like the tactics, like the really, really small level things that all the staff are gonna be doing, and they would go back and provide even more detail for those because they hadn't provided that detail within the final plan. So there's still information that we're continuing to get from different consultants. We can see with Andy in particular, if there were dollar signs, like what does $1 sign versus $5 signs equal? How did you price these different things out? Do you have more details than what's in here?
Time table.
Yeah.
So I think would be, in my opinion, what would be really great to have from staff going into budgeting would be outcome from those meetings and meetings, like acknowledging is a lot of work. Like, putting the thought into that is a pretty heavy lift, but it's well timed, well invested, I believe. But to say, okay, from all the things that you just said, these are the ones that staff collectively budgeting and is recommending that rise to the top for 2025. And then the rest of them fall in line, and these are our dreamy orders of how they go. But a specific set of, this is what staff is presenting to the board that we would ask that you include into the planning for next year. And I would expect that would be shown in their budgets. But if you feel like it's helpful to have like yes or no on those before they get too far into their budgets, we can work with that. But...
And ideally, that would be like at a project level. Like, we need a fill-in-the-blank, and then we need it for next year. Or we need a fill-in-the-blank, but we won't need it for two or three years, like at that level of detail. But definitely 2025 because we are, you know, coming up on that deadline.
And there's two aspects. There's kind of the Hitchcock component of like, this is what exists and we need. And then there's maybe the aspect of more of the, whatever the other component is, that says the feedback told us this, and these were some of the most requested nice things. And we dreamed about these, you know, five to 10 years of ideas, and we think we'd like to go after these in the year to come. These are the priorities that have risen to the top, no matter what the dollar sign attached were. But we've sort of crossed those dollars with wish lists and recommending, you know, maybe it's this whole new programming, and it's gonna require an initial investment of X. I don't know. I'm making this up. It's at the beach, and we therefore need to buy these two new boats before we can offer this bedless program. But that, both and, right? The maintenance piece and the, what are we doing, new and differently advancing the district in light of the strategic plan as well.
Yeah.
All right. Everybody good with that? We're gonna start talking about budget guidelines. Oh, wait. Have we done with capital? I had a couple of capitals. Oh, I apologize. I apologize. I have... No worries. So just a couple of things. First of all, for people who haven't taken a look at the packet out there, there's almost a full page of items that have been completed. And I think it's worth noting that almost all of the items came
And I think it's worth noting that almost all of the items came in substantially below budget. So thank you, thank you, thank you. We appreciate that. I wasn't really sure what the land improvements for the tennis courts, remaining funds to be spent on the AGA projects, that's 73,000. Does that mean that the village was covering that or we were covering it? Or was it more than what the village was covering? Could somebody just explain that, that 73,000?
That was the piece that was above what the village covered.
So they, I forget the number, 3.395 million or something, and we paid 73,000. That seems like a pretty good deal, guys. So I'm good with that. Okay, wonderful.
Venture a little at yourself.
Yes. Come on, Christie, do it again.
There's a lot of dislocated shoulders.
Yes, absolutely. And then just a couple of other things. The SOFAT work at the rec center, I remember we were concerned about some safety stuff and it was still targeting for Q2 completion. We're obviously past that. First of all, is it safe?
It's done. We just haven't gotten the invoice.
Great. Okay, good. No, that's great.
Oh, I don't have that marked as complete?
It says project not yet begun, but still targeted Q2 completion is the update for July. That's probably line two, four, six, maybe line six.
Oh, because we did talk about that. We knew it was done. We're waiting on an update.
Yeah, okay, great. And then I certainly want to highlight that we are $20,000 over budget on trees and I couldn't be happier about that. So we're planting lots and lots of trees. Thank you very much. Wonderful. And then just the last thing with Centennial. And again, this goes back to the comment I had about Hibbard. Are you trying to find a single contractor for these things or does it make sense to slice and dice? I mean, there's obviously two components that are strictly electrical. The other one looks like there's some coordination between the cooling tower and the roofer. So I can see the benefit of a GC there. I don't see a lot of benefit paying a GC an extra 10%, 20% to then just hire an electrical contractor. Are we looking at those things?
The car charging station, we would try to do the majority of that in-house.
Great.
Because it's so close to the building.
Right.
We are currently waiting on a scope of work from the structural engineer for the roof repairs. And then that's going to, we're not, probably not moving the cooling tower anymore because of the requirements that were put in place through the village permitting process. So.
So then there's no roof repair if there's no cooling tower relocation?
Well, we, the reason we were moving the cooling tower was for ease of maintenance and future issues that we were thinking we will see on the roof. But we still have to repair that roof.
Okay.
Because we are not moving the cooling tower.
All right. I guess my only observation is it sounds like you've got two separate projects. One is an electrical project and one is a.
Right. The generator is totally separate.
Right.
But we are waiting, I guess we could kind of move forward with the generator now because the reason we were holding off is we had the same area for the cooling tower location, the generator and the car charging station. So we didn't want to put one in and have it impact bringing the cooling tower on and off the building. So we've been kind of holding off until we get the scope of work to figure out how we're going to proceed with the roof repairs. So once we have that, and the generator, we might be able to do a lot of that in-house also with having an electrician on staff. So we will do the best we can to make sure that we're.
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then as the last one, there were five parts to that project. We pulled one of those projects out and we're currently working on it. That's the LED cord lights. And that's almost done. Or is it done?
Correct. They're, they're in their week two of installation and will probably be done by Friday this week with the four banks.
So the tennis and pickleball that Sheila pointed out, right, is budgeted in here at 250 that we're not going to spend this year. Is there a formal way to, like, we can move that so that that 250 is sitting in 2025 capital waiting for us, which oh, by the way, is a little more than half of what we're asking for for the grant. So then when we get the grant, we kind of had the pickleball fully covered.
So officially, what's going to happen is this is going to be an orange thing that either gets canceled or moved. And then when I go to put together the spreadsheet and move everything forward, I'm going to pick up this stuff that's removed and then it automatically gets populated in for 2025. Hopefully I do it right. You know, last year, I made a mistake on one of them, but usually I'm picking them up and carrying them over.
Is anybody else glad that's getting recorded?
So I guess sometimes it just feels better to know that it's not, if we say our budget next year is 5 million for capital, my ask is, well, that's 5 million, but we don't dock ourselves 250 for the one that came over from last year. Does that, you know, so it's really 5 million plus the leftover. And I point this out because I know we said we would like it if the grant comes in, you know, around this one and a half million dollar budget so that we maximize, but don't go too crazy. But in my logic, if we went over by 300,000 at that point, we could feel like it didn't as much because.
And I hear what you're saying, what the other side is saying the same thing, is that there wasn't the other 750 in the, or I guess it was 900,000 less than 250, there's 650 ever in this plan before. So it's still a lot of new dollars. So, so we can look at it either way. I hear what you're saying, but I think we can look at it either way.
But you will, you will see that number right off and move it over. And then we decide in the meeting, oh, this is this project that we're going to put this project in. So we won't need this however many hundred thousand. There's a lot of that.
And something might join the pavilion from 2020.
Is it saying the same thing by saying that if you don't spend this 250 in 2024 and it moves to 2025, the budget was five, it's now 5,950. Is it saying the same thing?
Well, I think we have decided that it's going to be 5,411,000.
Because it's more than the 250, right?
Correct.
Right. But my point being that if it's in this year, we don't spend it, but the plan is to spend it next year, the capital raises by what you're moving over, that not stays the same and so something gets penalized by that.
And that's all mostly true, but you know, what we're always generally solving for is our cash balances and our cash reserves. So it doesn't really matter whether we spend it in '24 or '25. We still intend to do it, obviously depending if the scope changes or the number changes or whatever. But the flow doesn't matter that much from year to year.
And I'm tracking that plus or minus, right? I'm tracking that plus or minus. And Mike and I had a conversation a week or so ago about the projects that span over years. So I'm now doing that analysis to see where our budgets were and where we wound up on the big projects that go over one, two years. So there's a lot of research on if it's done.
But, I mean, all right, I'm going to dive into weeds for a second here, but as long as we're talking about capital, I mean, how much of, say, Langdon is budgeted for this year?
1.8.
Let's call it. All right.
Well, that's, that, yeah, that is 1.8.
So that 1.8. We're not actually spending that this year, even though it's in the budget this year because we're not going to get billed.
We only budgeted 1.5 for this year and then we budgeted the rest for next year.
1.5, 1.8. We're not spending it this year. We're spending it next year because we're not getting billed for it this year.
Right. But what we don't get billed for.
Yeah.
Will pile into next year.
Right. It just adds next year's number higher.
And then what happens is our cash reserves, you know, our cash reserves are going to be up at what we don't spend, right?
Right.
And it's of course collecting interest.
Yeah, no, I got it.
And then we pay it when the bills come in.
Right.
Same thing with the Gilson.
Right. I'm with you. I just, it's, it's a, revolving is not the right word, but it's a.
Moving. It's just constantly moving. It's all about cash flow.
It just rolls over. Yeah, it just rolls forward.
And that's the thing is that the thing that I focus on is cash flow. Cash. Because we don't have to worry about taxes.
Peach.
Yeah, right. So we're just kind of, you know, looking at that. And if it's not going to be in the expense bucket, I'm collecting interest on it as it's sitting on the balance sheet. So, you know, either way, we're trying to keep track and not lose sight of anything that is important.
Right. Right. Any other questions about capital?
Budget guidance.
All right, budget guidelines. All right, budget guideline discussion. So you have a memo in your packet?
Yep. You have some information that Sheila was able to gather from other park districts on what they're contemplating for 2025. I think, you know, given this conversation, given the fact that we don't have, you know, a firm grasp on the projections as of quite yet, I don't know how far this conversation can draw to a conclusion. But you have it, you know, feel free to discuss it as much as you like, but it might be best served to move that to that finance committee in the whole meeting.
Yeah. I mean, I'm just going to throw out there, I think I've discussed or mentioned this in previous meetings, I think that it benefits us to have a good amount of focus on surplus at the end of each year as a target, just because we know that we spend these capital dollars every year for different projects. And instead of having to turn to residents and ask them for money each year, that we can pay for these things out of our surpluses. So my focus is surplus with a eye towards trying to save some money. You know, it's important to me about waste and about ease of spending somebody else's money, whatever, you know, it's just perception. To me, if we could just kind of make sure that we're hiring to the right number with part-time staff to hire, or it's just one of the big numbers because that's salaries. I just, if we could focus on saving some money, but focus on this N dollar number, that's kind of where I am leaning and would love to see a effort made this season. You guys all agree? Great. Let's move on.
So we don't have an idea of what our idea.
So.
I have.
Go ahead.
I'd love to hear what you all think.
If we're going to punt this to the committee, to the finance meeting, I'm fine punting to the committee, to the finance meeting, or we can start drawing out some.
I think it's worth having a little conversation, sharing feelings.
I am, I am more in an interest in a hybrid approach. I understand the idea of managing to a certain surplus or aspiring to a certain surplus. I'm concerned that we're certain the numbers realistically based on previous performance and analysis such that we're not throwing out a high number and then saying, okay, therefore the solution is raise the fees enough to get there. And to make that decision in a vacuum would not be, in my opinion, in the best interest of the district. So my encouragement to staff would be that if we're going to work off of a surplus type target, I would want the message to be very clear that let's look at our costs, let's be thoughtful about the analysis, the data we have from our participation in programming, where did programs up and flow in recent years, and not just assume we get to the surplus by raising lots of fees. I think that's, and that's just common sense, Billy. I'm saying common sense. But I, there's always that risk. The easiest way to, to get to a surplus is, all right, hike all the fees to the maximum amount this, again, this year. We've seen some of our programs soften. That could have been reaction to that. It might not have been, but I think I'd ask the staff to go back and take a hard look at those questions and present not just, we're going to make that number by fees, but give some backstory and some analysis along the way as to these are the options we considered and truly fees was the only way we could get farther, or these are some other adjustments we're going to make within our programming to, to achieve that without just strictly tapping on a 5%, 6% increase.
And I'm probably somewhere in between the two of you. I mean, pragmatically, each individual, you know, group head division head, whatever, really has to work with their fees and their, their salary costs. So that's where they're going to start. But I think it's helpful for all of us here to look at where we're trying to get. So I think that's what Patrick was pointing out. And, and I'm certainly in that camp as well. I mean, we talked about this two years ago, that the surplus, the budgeted surplus went down substantially. And I thought we talked about trying to stem that tide, but then last year, during the process, at one point it looked like the, the proposed surplus might be as low as four and a half million dollars, which obviously is totally unacceptable and we all talked about it. But often we don't hear that number until it's almost too late to do something about it. And, you know, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but my, my recollection is that in four of the last seven years, we've generated a surplus north of $7 million. At some point, I would like to work back toward that certainly as a goal. Does that mean that I'm going to be disappointed if we don't see a surplus of $7 million this year? No. But we've obviously done it in the past. I'd like to know why we can't do it in the future if, if the staff believes we can't. But certainly something solidly into the sixes would seem to make sense to me, which is sort of consistent with our performance last year and our budget this year and where things seem to be going this year. So I think it's good to have those numbers in the background. But to Kara's point, we don't want to, I mean, obviously, we can budget a $10 million surplus by having fees go up 30%. We all know we're never going to hit it because nobody's going to use our services anymore. That defeats the purpose. And I think that point is very well taken.
And some of the conversations you said, I don't want this coming like Disney World where the ticket prices are going up so much, there are not as many people are going anymore.
Absolutely.
And, you know, I guess it's sort of the, I mean, there's something in one sense you can say, well, at least people paying this is more like user fees. I mean, you're not, you're not going everyone, you're just using people who want to use the facilities. But on the other hand, you know, I feel like it's almost the same. We have so many people using our facilities. You know, if you make the comment that you didn't want, like to raise funds, you know, on backs of all the residents, but that's kind of how you're doing it. If you raise your fees too high, I mean, you're, you're getting to that surplus by, you know, by, by raising fees on everyone who's using the property. So I, so I'm really kind of concerned. I really feel like if you're going to this, and it's like another task for you, but you really kind of have to look at what, what similar programs are looking like in other, you know, camps, other camps and other districts and other private camps and just kind of make sure we're not pricing ourselves higher than we need to be.
Okay, so.
I'm sorry.
Right. Just quickly to add to what you're saying. So many of our services are a value add to our community and specifically people who are utilizing them oftentimes do so because it is the lower cost option to them. So for large families, our summer camps provide childcare and camp solution for them because to, to go to private camp facilities is exorbitant in price. And so when we, when we continue to raise those fees to a point where families cannot afford to send their kids to camp in the summer, I, I don't think that we're doing our jobs as, as a staff and as a board member. So I, I think there's a balance, of course. And I think we saw the pain points this past year in camps and that's information you guys could share back with us. I don't, I don't think a flat increase across everything has ever made sense. And you promised that that wouldn't occur. So I'm, I am curious to see where we can be flexible in, in looking across so that it's not just a hike for everything.
So then just to finish, my, my point before is I think we've been raising both fees and salaries by 5% the last couple of years. And we are in a much higher inflationary environment. I mean, the, the 12-month trailing CPI now has fallen below three. And there's every reason to believe it's going to be even a little bit further below if the recent trends continue. So, you know, in terms of guidance for wages, unless someone tells me that we're running the risk of, of losing good people or not being able to attract good people, I think that our past strategy has been to have the, the salary increases be somewhere around the, the trailing CPI. So that would tell me the guidance is somewhere around 3% unless the world changes in the last few months as it did one other time. And then we'll have to sort of react to that. In terms of fees, I like seeing the fees a little bit higher, not 5%, but I'd certainly like to see 3.5% or 4% to give us a little bit of cushion. Because again, I do think our surplus is kind of behind where it's historically been recently, but not significantly different. And again, not across the board, but be strategic about it. Certainly places where we were aggressive in raising fees this past year, maybe it didn't work so well. Maybe there's no fee increase. Maybe there's even a fee cut or whatever. I think that makes a lot of sense.
I just, I think that we can achieve our goals with a combination of being very aware of what we're spending. I mean, Christie brought it up easily three times to, well, if we do that in-house, I can, you know, and to, to try and have the mindset as we're preparing for next year that, okay, hey, if, if we're not raising price on this camp, how can I try and trim what it costs to run this camp a little bit? What is it going to, can I save five bucks a kid? Can I save 20 bucks a kid? Whatever. Just, you know, do I need to, do I need to order all these pieces when, you know, I can extend the life of something and reuse it? You know, there's just ways that we may not need to spend as much to, that's, that's, that's what I'm trying to get at. And be cognizant of it. Because it's too easy to say, you know what, the kids use this box of crayons, even though it only got used once, you know, we're going to order a new box of crayons. Just be aware because it's not your money doesn't mean that it's too easy to spend. And I'm not pointing at you, but I don't know. I'm just, you know, let's, I, I don't know. I'm not making those decisions at that level. We're just, you know, we're trying to give guidance. And I just want to emphasize the point of let's try and be really cognizant of the money, the dollars being spent to operate. And maybe there's little ways that we can save here and there.
Okay, so the visual that you need to see would be what I gave you guys last year? You can start with 2017 because I already have that spreadsheet. And then I'll update it for 2023 actuals. I'll do the 2024 projections. And then you'll see where we are, you know, budget. We won't have the 2025. We won't have the 2025 stuff yet because we still need to give everyone guidance. And the two major things we need guidance on is wages and fees. So if we could get this together, and I'll get this to you as quickly as I can and as accurately as I can, if something changes, I'll send updates, okay? Knowing that we, if we could give staff guidance by, what's the day after report, meaning ten?
Tuesday.
Okay, by September 10th, then they can start working on their budget so that we can have enough time to review, to start with our meetings that are going to be at the COW.
Would it help to give them those numbers now? Would they get two weeks farther along, or will they not start sooner?
Because I, I made a suggestion to talk about it.
Because if we iterate further on that, would that help staff? Because we can make that happen real quick, if, if you're saying staff will actually advance sooner and faster and we give them two extra weeks.
Well, I know that it would advance this staff right here.
Then let's do it.
But I don't know, I mean, I don't know.
So why don't you pick it up then?
Yeah, I, are the other commissioners comfortable talking about the fees and the?
No problem with that.
Yeah, I mean, I think philosophically, we historically attach this to inflation, as, as you pointed out, and I am similarly comfortable, I know we've gone for sort of the max on both ends in the last couple of years, and I don't think there's a necessity for that this year on either side. Three or three and a half on the staff increase feels right to me, and I appreciate the comparative analysis that you pulled for us, thank you, I think we're in line with that, and we've, I think we've done several adjustments in recent years to adjust for salary banding and comparable market competition, and so I don't, I think I would like to believe we're in a good place from the data you've told us. So I'm comfortable with, with Mike's recommendation on that one, and I'm comfortable with fees at four percent.
I'd like to see fees not go four percent, and I think the, you know, kind of falling in line with what I'd like to see, because I, I believe that there were some programs that were absolutely impacted by the increase in the cost last year. Our, our attendance was increased by the cost last year, and so I, I don't, I don't know that, you know, a four percent increase as a bucket to draw from is, I think that's being a little aggressive where we are right now.
Thanks for saying that. I, I'm, I came in thinking three and three, so I was hoping we could be at three and three.
Can I just suggest, let me just suggest, that if we do three and three, knowing that salaries are seventy-five to eighty percent of what we do, okay, we don't really help on the capital side, right? So I'd like to maybe see a twenty-five or fifty basis points difference between that, and I would prefer that we don't drop the salary number. Only because I know what it takes to try and replace a full-time employee, and I know if you do two and a half percent, and right now inflation's at three, and maybe it'll drop to two and a half by the end of this year, I'm not sure. It's just my suggestion.
That's why I didn't say three, three, but I can go to three and a half, I understand that.
You go three, three and a half, now we're still bumping up, up fees, you know, so.
But Patrick, every fee is still subject to review, so they've done in previous years where we lost the demand because fees were too high.
So we're going to make some adjustments.
I fully expect them to make those adjustments.
Absolutely.
But sort of the baseline class on like, the random activity that's, you know, just the standard sort of bump would be that, that's the guidance, but then they go line by line, correct me if I'm wrong, team, but this is what I've observed in the last few years.
Like senior classes, we try to not raise fees on.
Too much, right? You could do a one percent, maybe one and a half percent increase there.
For fixed income senior, I think that's, that, you know, I like to see dollar amounts for these things too, I think that's always like the camp, I know in years past, you'll say that, that's the equivalent of, of, my mom looks at our classes here, right? So that's the equivalent of my mom per session having to pay twenty-five dollars more. I mean, that means my mom might have to cut one class that she goes to.
And that's such a small part of what we do, so.
Right, so I think there are just populations of people we have to be more sensitive to, and that's one of them.
I agree.
But so the, the guidance, we're, we're still interested in where the surplus comes out, but to start this process, I think I hear people saying, for the most part, three percent on salaries unless CPI falls off a cliff, and three and a half for fees, but being careful and judicious and considering some places clearly lost and certainly places where we've seen some bigger fee increases in the past where demand hasn't materialized, being more aggressive there too. Is that safe guidance for folks?
So I still disagree.
Okay.
Because even though Sheila says three and three, we still remain at our, our lower surplus, I think, I say sharpen your pencil, that you can find some room. So I, I, that's where I am.
I'd love to see that, you know, I'd love to see that.
I'm pushing a button, let's, you know, come on.
Just, what do you want to share?
No, I guess I, no, I'm, I'm probably just saying, three and three and a half percent, but I'm kind of feeling also, you know, looking, I, I feel I kind of agree with like Ally, like looking at different like populations, and, you know, seniors are one possibly, but so are like the little kids, because I, it's just, I'm, I'm just going back to families when they, you know, move here and their kids are really young, there's just so many different expenses as well.
And if you want to do three and three, that's, meaning you set the guidance.
Yeah.
Can I ask, when we talk about wage increase, what percentage of that flows through to benefits? So is it three percent in wages and benefits? Is it three percent each? Like, can I look at the sum of those? Benefits usually have been rising by a little bit.
Yeah, benefits are different because that's a pass-through of a, of a brokered cost for like health insurance.
Right, and that brokered cost could, last year, we had an eight percent increase for the HMO, and we had a little over five percent increase for the PTO, still much less than any of, you know, employer benefits that, you know, we have, Daryl does a really good job of keeping those costs pretty contained. I won't know where that's at until October, sometime in October, but, you know, we.
But in terms of like our whole bill for staffing, right, it's roughly, I have a roughly nine point one million dollars, okay? And if that goes up, let's say at a blended rate of eight percent, that's seven hundred and twenty thousand dollar increase, right? And then I have our whole fee structure, are we talking daily membership and, for your daily fees, for your membership fees, are all those going up three percent by the same number?
That's where the guidance gets applied, but it's not a unilateral everything.
Three, but like if I am looking at a twelve point five million dollar number there, and that goes up three percent, right? So if we go up three percent in our wage benefit bucket and three percent in our fee bucket, we actually are gaining capital, okay? I don't know if that keeps up with inflation, but I just am pointing out that one's bigger than another.
Right.
And then furthermore, I think we need to have discussion, I would like to have a discussion about taxes as well, because that's another piece of this, if we're aiming for that operating surplus number, or if that's part of what we're doing, taxes goes into that. And we have this wonderful problem, which is that seventy-five percent of the budget or whatever the number is now is paid for by fees, right? Well, I mean, you know, can we live with a five percent, like, can we max the levy and go three percent and three percent? Like, that, that is, this is not a philosophical question, like, they're related and they're different levers.
We will be, we will be maxed out on, you know, certain piece of the levy, we've got total control over, the special RAC fund, for example, but for the most part, for most of what we levy on, we will be limited to the twelve-month trailing CPI, so it won't be five percent.
Okay.
It might be two percent, it might be two, as a value would be two point nine percent, but whatever it is.
We had one year of one point four percent.
I remember, but I'm just wondering.
But this tax levy is based on last December.
It's another year before, so what was that year?
Trailing. Can you remember what it was at the end of December?
Four high fours.
It was something before, I saw.
It's high fours, right, but.
I want to say, yeah, let, let me look, because I have it here.
Well, just hypothetically, let's say it's twelve, right? Are we committed to?
Did you say just twelve?
Yeah, I'm just saying, like, I'm not talking, I'm talking kind of in farcical numbers because it's like, we don't know some of these.
Well, I think we're captive five, but yes, I think we start year over year, we go for that.
Okay, that's important.
We are, we are.
But December of 2023 was three point four.
Okay, seems in line, right? So like, I just.
So even like fees would be raising at roughly the same rate, we could do three point four percent increase in fees.
I'll go with that.
It could be three, it could be three and a quarter, right? I mean, it doesn't have to be, we just need some sort of guidance.
To start the process.
And if the number comes out, then we can come back and, and cut it back.
While we're talking levers, we've thrown out, you've thrown out several surplus numbers, and I just want to, you made a comment that, well, if it's four and a half, that's completely unacceptable. Maybe, maybe not. I, I understand that, and that's your opinion, I just want to be clear that that's not necessarily my opinion as emphatically, because I do, gosh, I recognize that we are in a very fortunate situation with the finances and the budget that we have, and there are districts all over in Illinois that heavily rely on subsidy to make the budget meet, to get the bare minimum services out there, and to keep their parks cleaned up and grasses mowed, et cetera.
And debt too, they have to shoot debt to.
And, yeah, and when we were going through our financing with Andrew Kim, we talked about, you know, some other districts and how they, they finance things for, for basics. And so I remind myself, sort of taking a step back, making sure, we have a lot of great options, as we realized when we were financing the last, the purchase of Buffalo. And so while it is always nice to do all of the things that we dream about, and we probably can, and a six-ish million dollar, seven, as you wrote, one capital surplus keeps us going there, I'm not completely uncomfortable with the fact that there might be a time that the board has a conversation around, you know what, we're going to intentionally choose to accept that surplus might be five this year, and we're going to have to make some hard choices, because that is, at least, I, I think a lot of people live in a world where you do have to eventually budget against a hard stop and make some choices. And so we've had the luxury of being able to do almost everything we've wanted, like, every year, and so that's, just to acknowledge that's another lever, right?
Absolutely.
Maybe not the preferred one, but if we feel really strongly that we want to keep the fees at three, that's fine, we might acknowledge that the threshold has to come down a little bit. I don't want to, I fully support sharpening pencils, but I don't want to pinch staff so much that they're frustrated or our quality starts to suffer in, right, because we've handcuffed them too, too much either. So I just want to, I don't want to be unreasonable saying, we're asking for all of this and you to do it on a threadbare budget. There might be a point where the board says, our part is, we're going to trim our anticipated capital spending, or some other lever that we can control.
Part of this money, you know, it's like everything feeds into each other, is kind of knowing what the five-year capital plan is, because after next year, I mean, right now, their two biggest capital projects are going to be Langdon and Gilson, and after, you know, a couple of years, that they're, that's going to be gone away. So, you know, what, what else potentially is out there? And I'm, you know, other than the fact maybe replacing the CRC, but, you know, I, I don't know if there's anything.
We have some debt that we have to pay for on operating surplus also.
Yeah, yeah, the best, yeah. But. But it's not, but it's not, it's not like two and a half million, which is, or three million, which is Langdon and Gilson. I mean, that's, so, you know, are we going to have the same?
Well, that's interesting, because it is like three million.
Oh, it is, all right, then I'm wrong, okay, take it back. I said I'm not numbers person, I'm not.
To that end, when I first joined the board, one of the things I loved about this board was, we had a capital plan for each of the coming five years, plus a bucket holder for the next five years. And, you know, when, when we get a year into it, you know, so what was year two last year, we would look at that and then decide, well, do we really need to do all of those things, or maybe that van can go another year, or so on and so forth. I love the way that the process worked, and we made a conscious decision to basically clear off the, the slate before we went into our strategic planning and so on and so forth, but I would love for us to build back to that again, to your point, so we can see what's coming down the road, and how we might be able to slot different things, and how we might be able to address over a number of years. I thought we had a phenomenal process before, I know why we took a pause, but I would desperately love for us to get back to that again.
Well, I assume we're going to see a, a spreadsheet of.
You will.
Yeah.
And Christie.
Which is what you're speaking to, right? But it's not what we've done the last couple of years, really.